That we spoke of earlier, to my knowledge, has gone away and there are no successors. You know, can I promise you what somebody else will do tomorrow? Well, of course I can't. But I can tell you that this zoning petition was not filed frivolously. It was filed in connection with lots of talk with Jay Camp, with an earnest attempt to work towards something where the town is honestly in a very awkward position in that the ENT district that is planned for this area itself has the problematic use as a part of it. And in effect, that problem has become my client's problem. But by going through the process we're talking about, I think we can resolve that. That's my impression is that we can resolve that. I don't know how to cure, you know, a belief that there's a bad faith thing going on here. I can't do that, other than to tell you, we're doing our very best to move forward in a way that we think makes sense. And that's all we can do.
Okay, Mr. Query.
Question. Your words kind of led to believe that you can't guarantee us that something won't come up and you would take advantage of this.
Well, of course I can. I mean, of course I can.
That's my problem, is you can't guarantee that.
Well, but what I can tell you is that the 30-day deferral that he's talking about, find me a project that can get through in 30 days.
But my concern is, is what I've kind of heard you say in the past, is that if you filed something before we make a change, that may take precedent. And that's a concern of mine.
Well, I think if I don't have a building permit, I don't think, just the fact that I've gone down and filed something gives me any sort of vested right. But Charlie will advise you on that.
Well, Senate Bill 355, I believe it is, which was the one that had all kinds of changes to the enabling legislation for zoning, which switched it from building permit to application for the permit. That hasn't passed. That's still sitting dormant in the Senate. And I don't know if it's going to come up in the remaining court session or not. But that's still out there. But there's a lot, that doesn't mean it would go into effect immediately. It probably wouldn't go into effect until, say, October 1. But right now, it is getting a building permit and not an application for a permit.
Right. I assure you, I have no influence with the legislature on that subject. I don't want to miss this opportunity because I may not get up here again. But I don't represent the existing extended stay place. Don't know the people. It's a whole different business. But because a lot has been said about that, I did go check the facts with the police department. And I urge you to do the same.
I have.
Well, then we need to compare our notes. Seriously.
Mr. Urban.
That being said, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion on 2019-2 that we defer A, B, and C for a time not to exceed 30 days. Until July the 8th.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Any discussion? Okay, seen, noticed. Mr. Query.
Our chief is back here about the thing, so I would like to clear something up, if I may.
Let's don't put our chief on the spot.
End the discussion.
May I say, Mr. Query, that the chief may not be able to inform you of everything that's going on. Obviously, there are all kinds of investigations and things going on. And so, I'm not sure he's going to be able to comment on this, from a zoning standpoint at all.
There's a motion and a second on the floor.
There's a motion and a second, and we're under discussion. Mr. Higdon.
Just to be clear and enter it into public record, I think there, I believe I speak for everyone, but if not, I'll certainly speak for myself, that we absolutely do not want another extended-stay hotel built on said property. Make sure that's very abundantly clear.
Mr. Men.
Just want to add to that, and it's not just the brand Extended Stay. It's any other brand that would have weekly rates or something like that. We do not want anything like that on that property. And we've got to do everything we can to keep that from happening.
And what I would also mention is, if anybody really wants to look at something that's truly from the heart of an individual, a dad with kids who was at a soccer game, and see what the problem is, I'd invite you to go to the site of that hotel and look at his comments. I've printed them out. They came out of almost a full page. And it's reminiscent of what I was as a dad or any other dad. I would expect bringing their kids to a soccer match. So, you know, agree or disagree, I think that was what hit home with me about that particular piece of property. Okay, any further discussion? So, the motion is to defer this for 30 days to July the 8th. Okay? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Query voting in opposition. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a site plan and elevation approval for Matthew's Festival Bonefish Grill. Mary Jo.
The Matthew's Festival was rezoned in 2016, under 2016-650. At that time, there was a, an out parcel that was left to come back for board's approval. And at this time, the Ziff Properties is requesting that the board review their site plan and elevations for Bonefish Grill to go in this area here. The original rezoning allowed for 8,000 square feet of restaurant purpose. And this building that Bonefish is proposing is 5,423 square feet. This is the general site plan. Here's a close-up. Included in that rezoning was a request to leave six trees, the six healthiest trees on the property. And those have been noted. They are being saved. And staff did go out last week to verify that those are very healthy trees out there. This is the entrance that currently exists and will be closed with the 74 widening project. They have illustrative drawings of landscaping here. This is the layout of the building in this area. And these are the elevations, which, so... This is facing 74. You have glass windows and some brick and a wood. It is a fibrous material that looks like regular wood. Here's your parapet. The signage is just for illustrative purposes. Again, they will need to meet the master sign plan that has already been approved for this area. Again, this is the side facing the shopping center. Facing Carrabba, same materials. And the side facing the existing Texas Roadhouse over here. So, you are reviewing the elevations and the site plan layout.
Do you have any questions? Mary Jo, let me ask you about the, if you go back up to the plan, where it says the Texas Roadhouse, go up one more.
Okay.
Keep going.
This here?
Yeah. DOT has not purchased that building or property at this point in time. Is that correct?
I'm not sure, Mayor. I have not looked at the tax records on that recently.
Okay. Well, the concern I have is if it doesn't get purchased, could that continue to be used as a restaurant in that location? And what does that do to the parking?
It would put a burden on the parking, but I also would defer to the applicant, who is here this evening. They may have some more insight on that.
All right. If you could come up, please.
Mayor, before the applicant gets up here, I did speak to Division Engineer Scott Cole this afternoon because there are old plans that do show the road being shifted, 51 being shifted, I guess that's really west. And in talking to Scott, he said there has been no final plans. So, it's, there's no guarantee that that Texas Roadhouse that says current right there, that that will go away. They have not created the final design for that road.
Wow. So, what's under construction?
Good evening, Alex Kelly, Stanchion Asset Porters. We represent the shopping center. We're the developer here in Charlotte. Answer your question. So, this will be interesting to see how it plays out. The, so, the Texas Roadhouse is moving here. Texas Roadhouse, all of you all, all of us, were provided plans by DOT. That is why we are closing this access point due to a new road, a new bridge that will be relocated from the existing position here to the west that would run through the Texas Roadhouse and through the Mattress Firm. So, there'll be a realignment of 51 that then protrudes through both of those. And then comes back in at Sycamore. Now, I don't know what Scott Cole has said, but Texas Roadhouse and us as landlord have spent a massive amount of money based off of the statements that DOT has given everyone that this and this would be removed. So, that's a fight that I am not a part of, but there will be a significant issue with that. The plan all along has been the road would get realigned. That was all qualified by Texas Roadhouse. That's why they've elected to spend a couple million dollars on the new store here. DOT would purchase this property from them as a total taking for the new bridge and road realignment. Therefore, they would reimburse themselves for this new build based off of what was going here. The zoning that occurred in 2017 allowed for one out parcel facility to be here, one out parcel facility to be here. We had months of discussions with DOT because we had two access points here and here. DOT came back time and time again and said that this had to go away due to a shift here and a realignment of the half cloverleaf that would pull you off of 74 onto 51 to the signal that's positioned right here. So, the merge distance between, and I get it, when you come out of here and move this way and want to merge left, would be too close relative to merging right if you're headed this way and then on to the clover, half cloverleaf that way. So...
So, maybe the simple answer to this is, there was a site plan that was resubmitted. And those two footprints for Texas Roadhouse and Mattress Firm are not on those site plans anymore.
We do not own either of these, just to be clear. We don't own the current Texas Roadhouse nor the Mattress Firm itself. We own the shopping center here outside of the Carrabba's here. The approved plan as of now, rezoning-wise, shows a building here and a building here.
For your part of the shopping center. So, do we have anything revised on this other section where Texas Roadhouse is and...
That's been approved. You mean where the current one is?
Where the current one is and where Mattress Firm is. If DOT does not take those, is there an existing site plan that allows a footprint on that piece of property? I mean, you don't, you're saying you don't own that.
We don't own those. We have nothing to do with those.
Okay.
So, our goal is obviously, you know, from a parking perspective, we have to maintain appropriate parking ratios on our property, which we do. Right here.
That's fine, that's fine. But, okay, so, Mary Jo, is that, do we have a site plan with those two footprints on it that is available for rebuilding on that if DOT...
Yes, yes. We have those on file.
Okay, so, who would be responsible, if we approve this, for ensuring there's parking available?
So, any user that would go into either one of those locations, if they stay where, what they are, well, Texas Roadhouse will go away, but whatever goes in there would have to verify parking at that time.
Okay, so, the burden would then be upon them.
Yes.
At that point.
Yes.
So, one thing that I would be aware of is that the Home Depot, the Harris Teeter that sits off-page behind our property, below our property, the Carrabba's, which is not parked to a code perspective. All of these, you throw all the parking into one big bucket, right? And so, when you start adding up all of those, the parking requirements, and you start adding up all of the parking on the master site, everybody, if you're at that Texas Roadhouse right now, the existing Texas Roadhouse, you can, through a private agreement referred to as an easement covenant and restriction document, park in front of the Steinmark and walk over to the Texas Roadhouse. So, there's, it's not a restricted parking situation. There's a private parking arrangement that's been recorded with an ECR that's of public record that governs that.
It would have to be reviewed. Anybody that goes into the new Tex, the old site, the Texas Roadhouse current site, we would have to review it. We would have to review to make sure there was accurate, sufficient parking available, even with the easement agreements. Because now, you know, that we would have to double-check it.
Mr. Melton.
Thank you, Mayor. Mary Jo, taking your statement you just made into consideration, I'd like to ask the same question the mayor asked, except in reverse. If we move forward, or if the owner moves forward with building the new proposed Bonefish Grill, 51 is not realigned, and the Mattress Store and the existing Texas Roadhouse remains, all three buildings are still there, is there any conflict with our existing zoning? Or the existing zoning? Can they just, somebody move into that Texas Roadhouse by right?
They could, yes. With the condition that they'd have to provide information to us so we verify their parking.
So, that they come to us and say, hey, we want to open up just a run-of-the-mill restaurant in that existing space in compliance with the existing zoning?
Correct.
They still would have to come to us to verify the parking.
They'd come to staff.
Come to staff, okay.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you. What is the timeframe for the Texas Roadhouse moving into the new facility, new restaurant?
So, it's under construction right now. They'll be open in October.
So, they'll be vacating and moving across in October, thereabouts?
Yes, sir.
And the Bonefish would be starting and ending, opening when?
Few months. They would, they would be under construction after Texas Roadhouse relocates.
So, there's no chance that both of them would be open?
And that's something we were mindful of when we were talking through this with everyone. We didn't want to compromise the existing conditions.
Any other questions? Okay, do we have a motion? Mr. Urban.
I do have a question. It looks like some of those parking islands are extremely large compared to the graphic of the tree. It would be nice if those are, I don't know if the aerial depicts it or not, but I know when we looked across the street at Sycamore Commons, where the pennies went in and whatever, we really placed an emphasis on the landscaping islands, making pedestrian access to the building a little bit more convenient. I'd like to see some thought process about how to do that because in these parking lots, and I frequent Roadhouse quite a bit, you know, you take your life in your hands, just sort of getting from point A to point B. I mean, simple pavement striping, some improved landscaping and some pedestrian ways would be very nice to sort of, just sort of ratchet up the level of pedestrian quality on the site, for lack of a better word.
We will have Susan double-check all that.
Okay. I think that's important. And the second thing is that no one's pressed upon it. The elevation is clearly the new millennial rendition. Could we get a sample, I know exactly what that is, but could we get a sample of the manganese endicott iron spot? That is a extremely dark brick. And it's kind of interesting that you chose, they chose that against your white backdrop building. So, that's going to be a really high contrast. And I don't know how comfortable folks are in seeing a building that's entirely... Yeah, that's, I got a box in this in my office. No, that's just, that's just a sample. The endicott manganese is an actual full brick. But I guess my question, Alex, would be, is that you've noted here, you've got ephesus on this building. And I'm surprised Commissioner Query hasn't jumped on that.
Kind of expecting that.
Yeah, well, I would, I mean, I would, I would be preferable to see more of that western cedar or see it all as brick because here's my druthers. Ephesus in that dark of a color fades. And that is going to become obviously noticeable against that manganese iron spot.
I think one thing I would say is that the elevation does not, as you will appreciate, does not do the coloration as much justice on the, on the ephesus component as it probably should. So, there'll be, I think that you will see, you know, a relatively dark... Jay scoot other way. Yeah, side. So, we go down.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a vast wall of site gauntlet gray.
So, this here, this is, this is the brick, right?
Yep.
This is the stucco piece that you're referring to, right?
Yes.
So, this, I think, will be, is a lighter gray than is displayed on this. I do not think that you're going to have a mirroring gray between the manganese brick.
Well, I would hope they wouldn't try and match. The rule of thumb is miss.
More of a departure than you would think, relative to the schematic.
I mean, this will be, this will be a very night and day building comparatively. They used to paint buildings dark black during World War II along the coast so they would disappear. And I get it. I mean, everybody's moving into this mode. And it's just more of a sort of a new sort of take on architecture and...
Yeah, I mean, we've got Stacy Millers here with Bonefish.
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned about that vast area of stucco. And I know those dark colors fade and they get chalky. And that's my only concern.
Mr. Higdon.
With all due respect to Commissioner Urban, I think we're getting overly prescriptive. If this is the colors that Bonefish Grill wants, then I'm happy with them. It's one of my favorite restaurants, by the way. I'm sure I'll eat there often. So, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Bonefish Grill elevations and site plan layout as presented.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seen none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Mr. Melton, what are you?
I'm in, I'm in support of the motion.
Okay. Motion carries with Commissioner Urban and Commissioner Query voting in opposition.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item, item 11 is a consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda items 11A through E.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item unfinished business is 12A. This is the adoption of resolution of special assessment. We took action earlier to defer or continue that public hearing. Therefore, it's logical to defer item 12A until July the 8th. Do we have such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. New business, item 13A, consider adoption of the FY 2019-2020 General Fund Tourism Budget Ordinance, CIP, and fee schedule. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, we worked hard on the budget this year. We've had three work sessions. This fiscal year budget, we're proposing a 28 cent tax rate on $100 valuation. At one of the work sessions, the board asked staff to figure out a way to cut $125,000 out of the operating budget. We did. That does equal one quarter of a cent. We did not recommend the quarter cent reduction in sales tax, I mean, property tax. Instead, we talked about adding that to the paving fund. Further discussion, the staff is proposing adding two patrol officers to the police department. So, that fiscal year '20, the police department will have six new positions. And the fire department positions will be funded for 12 months. These two combined represent about $605,000 related to public safety personnel. The tax rate of 28 cents raises about $965,000 in additional property tax. We are recommending to approve this fiscal year 1920 General Fund Tourism Budget Ordinance. It's attached, as well as the CIP and fee schedule. I would like to add a little caveat in here. Staff is also, further staff would like to be directed to report back to the board at the November 25th meeting and give you, the board, an update on the financial condition year-to-date, at which, at which time the board would consider the adoption of a 1% market adjustment, which would be effective January 1st, 2020. The estimated cost of this 1% market adjustment is $60,000.
Mr. Higdon.
Yes, I didn't make our, our last budget meeting. I was traveling with my day job. But I did note that funding for the Military Veterans Advisory Committee, which $2,500 was requested, was cut totally from the budget, as was $1,000 from the Appearance and Tree Board. I'd like to see those two line items restored. I think both of them are reasonable. They're minuscule amounts in our overall budget. And if there's no room for them, then I would suggest that we fund them at 85% of their ask. So, that would be $2,150 for the Military Veteran Advisory Committee and $850 for the Appearance and Tree Board. And that we also cut the Red Brick Partnership funding from $20,000 to $17,000 to make up the difference. So, that would be funding all of those at 85% of the ask.
Mr. Urban.
First of all, I'd like to commend staff on their work on this. As you know, I wasn't, I was looking for that $125K as a savings to go back the quarter cent. Commissioner Query and I had some roundtable discussions late in the game, late last week, with the chief. And it just happened to be, something came to fruition late in that day. And so, contacted Hazen and the mayor, and we called an audible. And our recommendation, our position was that we wanted to put that $125 into the police side in light of the incident, not incident, but the information that came our way. So, I'm supportive of the budget from that aspect of it. I also, by coincidence, was talking to... I also, by coincidence, was talking to the manager about MVAC and the Appearance and Tree Board. However, I still feel very strongly the advisory boards, um, should, when they have a project, come before the board to ask for funding and we can look at it. But in light of that, um, I also asked the town manager if it would be okay and he said it was acceptable. I am willing to take my technology allowance and apply $1,500 to both the Appearance and Tree Board and MVAC, um, for their uses they normally do. So, um, he can adjust that accordingly if everybody is okay with that.
So, Mr. Urban, would you like to make that into a motion?
Well, yes, let's see. I'd like to go ahead and adopt a motion to approve the fiscal year 2019-20 general fund and tourism budget ordinance, CIP and fee schedule is prepared. And then we have a note here that staff has directed report back to the town board on November 25th meeting regarding financial conditions, which the town board will consider the adoption of a 1% market adjustment effective in January 2020. That amount is estimated at $60,000 and that, um, in terms of the budget, my allocation of technology will go $1,500 to Appearance and Tree Board and $1,500 to MVAC.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Mint?
I will also agree to donate my technology balance for the year if that will help. I do support John's, um, mindset that I, our advisory committees are to be advisory groups and not doers, but, um, I would be willing to do that as well.
Mr. Melton?
You know, I'll jump on that bandwagon too, but I got a couple of comments. I want, it, it's no secret that I'm not going to be sitting up here at this dais next year of my own decision. But I want everybody to look in the back of the room and see those gentlemen standing there and realize that this is step one. This isn't the fix. We're not going to be living in a utopia when we have six new positions filled. This is the initial investment to get our police department where we need to be. As supportive as we were of the fire department last year, we need to be continually supportive of the police department for the next several years to get them to where they need to be or else let's just roll up that assessment study and stick it in the drawer somewhere and forget about it. I feel very firmly that we need to continue to keep staff in the 60th percentile. I set up here a meeting a year ago and bragged about how last year was the budget of, the year of the staff. That was, was the, the phrase that I used. We're, we're making the staff right. We're putting them in the 60th percentile. Whoever's sitting up here in January, make sure you stand behind that decision that this board made and spent the time, effort, money on. Keep staff right. Keep staff whole. Stay in the 60th or greater percentile and then look at giving them their merit raises. If not, again, let's take that study and stick it in the, in the drawer too. So my, my biggest two things are the people sitting in the back of the room and the staff. We all like to think that we're, you know, we're not the ones that make the town as special as it is. It's staff. We need to stay behind them and keep their back and keep them whole.
Mr. Query?
Are we in discussion?
Yes.
Okay. I, I would like to say that, uh, through the whole budget process, I have continually said that we promised last year to make the police department our number one this year because we did that to the fire department and got them where they need. I know it's not as many as, as they could probably use, but I think it is a good amount. I also, during the whole budget process, have said I would not vote for a tax increase. But support, after talking to the chief and to the manager, it looks like that's the only way we can do what's right for the police department. And I'd like to say that I will change my mind and I will vote for the, the budget because that's, that's what I had in mind all the time was to do what's right for our police. And we did what was right last year for our fire department and we're continuing to fund that this year.
Mr. Mint?
Just one other comment. Um, I think everybody up here is physically conservative, but there's another component that's to be physically responsible and that's not just for now, but for the future. And having the protection of, of our people with the police officers, making sure they have the tools they need to do their jobs safely too is critically important. And we've heard in the, um, citizen surveys that they will pay for a safer community, which includes our police. So I certainly support that and any of the employees in our town. It's also physically responsible to make sure that we are preparing this town with the savings to continue supporting not only our employees, our police departments, but also being able to provide services. So unfortunately, to do all of that with a town that's now 32,000 plus and no longer the 17,000 or 20,000 people, that we still have some services that are directed towards, um, that population and not the current population. So those are some of the reasons I support this tax increase and I am hoping that the citizens of Matthews understand why we're doing that.
Okay, I just talked to the manager. We need to amend the motion to include Mr. Mint and Mr. Melton's comments and he's suggesting $500 each out of your technology allowance for the MVAC and $500 each for the tree appearance.
I'll just say if you, if there are other places in this town that it's needed, I'm willing to donate it.
Well, what I would suggest, that's a suggestion to move the ball forward. We can always revisit. Like something may come up in the middle of the year or something like that.
Got you, okay.
So, so do we want to just amend that should make up the difference? Is that what we're going to do or?
So my suggestion would be, uh, your motion, can, everything you've said.
Yep.
But I would add two other commissioners to that. So two other commissioners will also get a reduction in their technology allowance by a thousand dollars, 500 to each, to tree and appearance, $500 each to MVAC.
So two additional commissioners, each $500 to each MVAC and A and T and board?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Wait a minute, who made the second? Chris?
Yes.
Are you in agreement with that?
I'm agreeing with that.
Okay, Mr. Higgins?
Yeah, I, I think the ask was not to give them more than they asked for by being altruistic and giving our technology, uh, allowance up. I'll certainly contribute as well, but I'd like to fund them at the ask that they gave, that they asked for. Uh, the Appearance and Tree Board asked for a thousand dollars. I'd like to see them funded at a thousand dollars and, uh, MVAC asked for 2,500. Uh, you can add me as a donor from my technology allowance to make that happen if that's necessary. Anybody else want to join? Come on, guys.
I'm a newlywed. I need every dime I can get.
Why don't you just, we'll just, we'll just, Hazen, we'll just adjust it to make it whole. We'll adjust it to make it whole.
Make it happen, Hazen. So there, there's going to be $3,500 then, which would be 25 for MVAC. That was the original.
Yeah.
Recommended budget. We will, uh, what, what we'll do is add, um, Commissioner Higgins to the list and we'll divide it accordingly. How about that?
If you want to. I mean, it, something always does come up. I've given it before to the planning staff on things and so it, stuff always comes up. Just keep us informed.
And this motion does not decrease Red Brick's donation, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, okay, so Mr. Urban, you're good with that? Mr. Query?
I'm second. I'm happy.
And I'm sure that, uh, if we really got that tight, all of our technology allowances would be of no consequence. Turn it over to the town to make things move forward. Mr. Query?
Yes, and I would, I would like to thank the mayor and manager for meeting, uh, with John Urban and I kind of on short notice, uh, to kind of go over some of the things that had. And I think it, it was a joint effort to get to where we needed to go and I do appreciate, uh, the fact that y'all jumped in there with us to help too.
Well, thank you for initiating that and being open to work it out.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we have a clear motion on the floor, Shana. Do you think it's clear?
I might have to get some numbers later, but yeah.
Okay. So no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. That's, that's great.
Thank you for coming, gentlemen.
All right, next item is 13B, review process for updating the strategic plan.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, our intern.